Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kathy, would you mind?
Certainly. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for all your blessings who come before you with a grateful heart. Lord, we just ask that you guide us, lead us in the direction you would have us go. Lord, we ask for your mercy upon all those who are affected by this COVID-19. We ask that you be with each and every one of us. Ask God of this in my precious name. Amen.
Who would have known that saying the Pledge of Allegiance with a well-fitting N95 mask was as hard as it is?
I hope they can hear us.
Yes, we'll have to speak up today. Let us know if we're not. You're fine? Okay, alright, so we'll want to do that. Okay, can we give? Okay, so we're going to table minutes of April 28th, the approval of the minutes of April 28th. And we'll move on to item two.
In the matter of request for appropriation transfer of funds.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item two? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I will vacate the chair and second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds.
Are there any comments or questions in regards to item three? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I will second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of notification from the Ohio Department of Taxation regarding first quarter casino revenue.
Questions or comments in regards to item four? Hearing none?
Motion to accept.
I will second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of 2020 access Sauter County procurement policy revision regarding the Ohio Department of Transportation Care's Act award.
Questions or comments in regards to item five? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I will second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of communication to House Speaker Pelosi and House Republican Leader McCarthy regarding Coronavirus Relief Fund Care's Act.
Questions or comments in regards to item six? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular scheduled accounts for the various funds, moral obligations, and then announced certificates in a total amount of $332,002.3.
Questions or comments in regards to item seven? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution agreement between Board of County Commissioners of Sauter County and the City of Portsmouth regarding sanitary engineering department.
Questions or comments in regards to item eight? Hearing none?
I will make motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting miscellaneous notices and reports.
Any questions or comments in regards to item nine? Hearing none?
Motion to accept.
I will second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution authorizing the Chairman of the Board of Sauter County Commissioners to file applications with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants to the US DOT Federal Transit Administration as authorized under the federal transit laws as codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5311, formula grants for rural areas, Ohio Rural Transportation Program and Transit Laws as codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5339, grants for buses and bus facilities, Ohio's Bus and Bus Facilities Transportation, and the Ohio Transit Partnership Program executing the contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon project approval.
Questions or comments in regards to item 10? Hearing none?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of notification from the Ohio Public Defender regarding indigent defense reimbursement for January of 2020.
Questions or comments in regards to item 11? Hearing none?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution reestablishing the law enforcement trust fund for the Sauter County Prosecutor's Office.
Questions or comments in regards to item 12? Hearing none?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting an amended certificate from the Budget Commission.
Questions or comments in regards to item 13? Hearing none?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of approving the fiscal year 2018 for use in 2020 Certificate of Countywide Cost Allocation Plan with Maximus Consulting Incorporated.
Questions or comments in regards to item 14? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of approving the petition for special assessments for special energy improvement project and supplemental plan between the Board of County Commissioners Sauter County, Ohio, and the City of Portsmouth.
Questions or comments in regards to item 15? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution proclaiming Old Americans Month in Sauter County, Ohio.
Questions or comments in regards to item 16? Hearing none?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of communication encouraging Governor Dewine to empower our local health department and elected officials to make community decisions.
Questions or comments in regards to item 17? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I will second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. Okay, Ms. Coleman, would you have anything additional this morning?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, I would add one thing, not to the agenda, but just as a point of conversation. Next week, next Thursday, we have some bid openings happening. And that is something that was scheduled well in advance of COVID. So with our changes in our meeting times, schedules, I figure we will be meeting twice next week. We might want to consider on Tuesday, and we can vote then. But we can talk about it then, about going back to two times a week. I think if we're starting to see as things start unfolding throughout the community, and more and more businesses going back to work, I think it would be important for us to go back to full force as well as doing the business of the county, going back to meetings a week. So we can discuss that more on Tuesday. But I think it would be a wise thing to do, since we're going to be doing it anyways next week, and then we can do it in subsequent weeks after that, possibly, but we can talk about that, vote on that next Tuesday if that'd be all right. Okay. All right, we have with us today, it's the Larry Mullen Show, Deputy Director of EMA, who, I just want to say this, the Director, Deputy Director, of course Director Kim Carver and Larry as Deputy Director have just done an amazing job. And if everybody knew the hours that they spend working with the public, working with all the different entities that are involved, it would probably amaze most. Their job is not nine to five. It is very much 24/7. I'm sure somewhere in there they get sleep, but at most times they're alternating that time. So they have done a wonderful job in keeping the public informed. I know Larry, you operate several Facebook pages and get information out on your personal page as well as Sauter EMA. And, you know, EMA also, COVID is just one of the things that they're monitoring. One of the things that I noticed is if there's a storm coming, we know about it. That hasn't ceased. COVID is just one more thing that they deal with through infectious controls. So nothing has been dropped, nothing has been reduced. The activity of the office has been maintained and actually ramped up significantly once emergency management is activated and they're in full swing. So I just want to say thank you to Larry and of course Kim. As you noticed, she's not here because she's over at the Operations Center. And she's sending her deputy over to do the work over here. But we appreciate all the work that they've done to date, and I know that they'll continue until we reach the end of this emergency. And we'll move on. But I don't know if anybody has any questions, the news media that's watching, I see a yes, I see some heads bobbing there. Anything specifically for the EMA Deputy Director though? Because we're wanting to get Larry out of here as soon as possible today. They have a lot going on over there at the Operations Center, and we want to respect his time as well. So Brian, is there anything that's come up for Larry specifically maybe?
Maybe?
Okay, alrighty, Larry, you want to join us over here? He's got his green mask on.
The question comes from Misty Cook Spicer.
Okay, WNXT?
If there are any COVID hotspots in the county, will that specific information be released to the public?
Larry, go right ahead.
Thank you for that question. That's a good question. If due to the order from Dr. Acton, say, most of the hotspots would either be our jails or say like a long-term care facility. And due to the orders that came out a few weeks ago from Dr. Acton and the Ohio Department of Health, if it is in a nursing facility, then everybody has to be notified within 24 hours. And so I would assume the same thing would happen with prisons because they've been very releasing a lot of information about, you know, how many cases. Fortunately, here at Southern Ohio Correctional Facility, we haven't had any cases. They did have one person isolated, but they passed the test and are back in the population. So I would say yes to that question. Of course, that would be up to the Health Department to let us know that this has happened. So they've been pretty good about sharing information with us, so I would say yes.
That's everything I can give you right of course.
Okay, all right.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Larry. All right.
I was assuming you'd like to start on the agenda?
I guess. You might want to come up to the mic.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry. I know you'll keep up the good work over there. Yeah, thank you.
For on the agenda, Mark Krecraft would like item 11, 14, and 17.
11, 14, and 17, Mark Krecraft, Sauter County Daily News. 11 is the Ohio Public Defender's Indigent Defense Reimbursement, and this is for January 2020. Indigent Defense reimbursement for January 2020, the amount submitted was $82,031.37. The amount rejected was $1,828. The amount approved was $80,151.37. Other billing approved, $3,412.72. The total amount approved was $83,564.09. The amount reimbursed is $71,029.48, and that is at an 85% reimbursement rate. 14, Maximus Consulting Services Certificate of Countywide Cost Allocation Plan. What that is, is that's Maximus Consulting, we use them every year. It's something that a lot of counties do, do this. And it tells us what our costs should be per department and who should pay for them. So it helps us to be able to determine our budgets, of course, as well as it draws a fine line on where funding should come from, whether it be grants or whether it be from the general fund. That's 14. 17, Communications Commissioners to Governor Dewine, the Health Department, elected officials empowerment to make community decisions. And it is a letter to Governor Dewine, basically spelling out, and I can actually, I'll do this very bottom. And if anybody wants a copy of this, they can get it later today. Dear Governor Dewine, Sauter County Commissioners are requesting that you empower our local health department and elected officials to have the right to make decisions best for our community. As of today, at 10:00 a.m., our county statistics are 12, 13 confirmed cases, no hospitalizations, and zero deaths. You and Director Acton have educated the public on preventing preventative measures needed to offset the risk of COVID-19. Sauter County Statistics reflect that we as a community have implemented your recommendations, and now it is time to empower the individual business owner to have the opportunity to reopen. They have been educated to know how to proceed, and we trust them to work with the Portsmouth and Sauter County Health Departments to make the right decision to keep their employees and the public safe. We know and have evidence that remaining close is a greater harm to the mental and financial health of our community. We took an oath as county commissioners to uphold the constitutions of the United States and the state of Ohio. It is our responsibility as elected officials to protect our citizens' rights and provide for the economic and safety needs of our citizens. Signed, and it'll be all three commissioners. So it is a letter requesting that that be the path that the governor takes and to let, at this point in the epidemic, or in the pandemic, to allow us to have more local control over those decisions. We saw some where some counties were taking some directions of making unofficial declarations, which I think if you're going to say something, say it with teeth. So we're going to, we're going to send this letter to the governor, and we're working with our legislators, we're working with the Senate, we're working with the House, Representative Baldridge, of course, and Senator Johnson. And we're doing all that we can to get our words to Columbus, representation from the governor's office as well, to let them know that our business owners are ready. And they feel that the, this process that we're going on right now is a little slow. It's slow, and we need to move faster in order to save jobs, businesses. And I believe that we can do it responsibly. The essential employees have been doing it all along. And we haven't had a massive breakout or a surge as what was predicted at first. So we believe that those that have been defined as nonessential, and I think that's a loose term. I think every job is important to every employer and every employee, that it's essential to their livelihoods. So we feel that by communicating this directly to the governor, that we'll see what happens. Hopefully, we'll see movement in the legislature, the Ohio General Assembly this week as well, to communicate that fact to the governor. I believe that was the three. Anything else?
Mr. Bill Shope, are you satisfied with the progress of reopening Ohio's economy? If so, why, if not, why?
I think that kind of touches upon what we.
I just wanted to make sure he was mentioned.
Mr. Shope, Bill Shope is Sauter, the Sauter Voice and newspaper. And I think the one part that we're discouraged by is the, especially the service industry, the inability of the service industry to open up quicker. And it's definitely, it's a major toll on our employers, their employees, and their livelihoods are at stake here. We're going to lose a lot of small businesses if we don't move faster. Go ahead.
From Mark Krecraft, where can the public find the list of services open to bids?
Services open to bids? We post them downstairs. That's mainly, that's mainly it. I mean, we, we put them in the newspaper as well, yes. I'm not exactly sure which bids he's talking about, but.
I think maybe specifically, because the comment came up when you were talking about next week, bids starting.
Oh, oh yeah, that's always in the newspaper. And matter of fact, all of those bids were talked about in here, we gave approval to, for him to move forward with the bids. So that's the process, it's in the newspaper. And that's always been the mode for that to be communicated.
Mr. William R. Stevens Jr. would like to know why the medical grade N95 masks in an office environment?
Why? Because we were given an opinion by our Assistant Prosecutor earlier in the week that while it has been loosened up for private individuals, private companies to make those calls on their own, those restrictions are not so loose for government and public buildings. So while the general public doesn't necessarily have to wear a mask, even though it's been left up to the employer to make those decisions, and that we can ask for people to wear them when they come into the building, we've left that up to elected officials, individual elected officials to do so. We ourselves, as employees of the county, have to wear them when we are in the presence of the public, according to the opinion. So that's why, trust me, we would prefer not to be wearing them right now. And when we are alone in our offices, we are allowed to not wear them, of course. But we need to abide by the opinion of our, in this case, our attorney, you know, to let us know that, who is interpreting those directives that are coming down from the state of Ohio. That's it.
You should always listen to your attorney. Sin Mackley?
Most of the time, yeah, hopefully, we should, yes.
Sin Mackley, Sauter County Daily News.
Okay.
Are you satisfied with how the election was completed? Do you feel that everyone had a chance to make their voice heard?
Wow. I don't, boy, that's a, that's a tough one right there. I know there was a lot of people that were confused because of the way it happened. I, I think there was a lot of effort to try to get the word out, this is the way the election's to take place. But you know, not everybody's on Facebook, not everybody listens to the radio, not everybody reads the newspaper. And even up to the last day, there was people asking about where their polling place was. And there was a polling place. I think that was the greatest, the greatest bit of confusion to most that I heard was there was no physical voting, which really threw a lot of people for a loop. So I think that was the one part that probably impacted the most people. Because they're just, you know, we're creatures of habit. We're, you know, if you're someone who likes to go to the polls, you don't expect that to be changed. You know, I heard people say, well, I thought it was June 2nd. Well, that was what was thrown out by the Secretary of State at the beginning. And the legislature, who has the exclusive right to schedule an election, is the one who changed it. So I don't know if satisfied is the word I would use. I'm not. I think there was a lot of people that possibly did not get to vote because of the situation, because of the changes. Now, whose responsibility does that lie on as an individual voter? You know, I, I can't say one way or another. I believe that as a citizen, we should do our best to stay educated as to what is being asked of us in voting. But in, this was an extreme circumstance, it really was. I pray that we are going to get beyond this so that we can go back to the normal way of voting for the general election, which is going to be a very important election. It's a presidential election, and we need to get back to the way the Ohioans are used to voting. And hopefully, they'll be able to do that soon. Kathy, I don't know if you have anything to add?
I had several, I would call them complaints. People thought that they were going to be mailed their ballot and not have to go through the process of applying, calling in for an application to apply for a ballot. Then there were the deadlines. And as you said, the difference between urban areas and rural areas are vast, a difference there. There's a lot of people who don't subscribe to the papers, they can't afford to subscribe. They, they don't have Wi-Fi and different things. So I, I pray that by the time the general comes around, all these flaws and things will be corrected and considered and corrected.
And I will add one other thing too, is that our local Board of Elections did the best they could, given what they were.
Exactly.
The directives that came from the state. Everybody needs to understand that, you know, the decisions that were made were not made at the local level.
That's right.
Again, these were EDX directives that were passed down from Columbus. And I know our Board of Elections workers worked very hard, very hard to work with people. But again, it was imperfect situation, it really was. And that's one thing that we've learned through this entire pandemic, that it has created challenges magnitudes I don't think a lot of people could have predicted. So the need, the lesson we need to learn, and matter of fact, I think Sin might have even asked us the other day, is what was the lessons learned from this pandemic? Were there lessons learned? Is either her or Betty Smith, one of those two asked the question. This is another great example, you know, how do you prepare for something like this? And if, and how do you educate the public in advance? That this is the protocol if this happens again? That's the one thing about the general election, they need to get ahead of it and start educating the public now if there's going to be any changes. Can they do that at the beginning of May with an election that's being held in November? Well, that's a long way off, but I don't know. I think the proof's in the pudding, that the sooner you start educating, the better off you're going to be, and you're going to be able to get more response. So I hope that answers the question.
Sin Mackley again. Are there any plans to facilitate making masks available for those who can't afford them, or would the county leave that up to local charities?
Actually, the counties, as an employer, we're making sure that our employees have them. There are masks at the front entrance. I know the big thing is, is there's such a lack of them now, still. We, we're still scavenging basically to find masks. One of, one of the things I'm seeing is just the people that are doing it individually are doing a wonderful job. One of the questions we've been asking EMA is how can we find more masks? We want to be able to buy them. You can't hardly find them, there's hardly any out there. So I don't think that really answers your question. There's no plans for the county to buy masks for 76 or 77,000 people, no. But, but we are making sure that county offices are covered, as are, I'm sure, other businesses making sure that their employees are covered per the directive. And then each and individual citizen has to make a choice on what they want to do, whether they want to wear them or not in public. And they're facing the same problem we are, is finding them. You know, there's a, there's a major shortage, even yet today, there's a major shortage. So a lot of people are making their own. So I know a lot of people are getting them that way.
Sin Mackley again. You had been confident that the governor would increase the reimbursement or indigent defense. With the statewide budget cuts, are you concerned about how much of that bill the county will be stuck with?
Sure, I mean, we're always concerned about those changes, we've seen it go up, we've seen it go down. We fully expect that with the budget cuts that the governor has already requested, that, that no doubt indigent defense would probably be impacted by that, possibly. Legislature has a say in that. We'll see. You know, the indigent defense being revised was one of the things that the General Assembly did to offset some of the MCO losses. Assembly did to offset some of the MCO losses. So, hopefully, they won't reverse that. Um, we shall see, and see where that goes. But of course, of course, we have to be concerned that, that that might change. Now, how much indigent defense has happened in the last two months? Not a whole lot. Um, not, you know, because we haven't had jury trials, we haven't had a lot of court, court operations going on. So, in that way, you have an offset there. Um, but yet, well, that's the other thing, you know, a lot of inmates were released as well, uh, nonviolent offenders, things like that. So, there's a, there's been a reduction in cost as well during this period of time. How much? We'll see. We'll see come, uh, because we just did, the reimbursement we just did, that was for January. They're always running four months, five months behind. So, so we'll see four or five months from now, how much of an impact it had.
Uh, Melissa Bennett, "When will the official election results be released?"
Um, the Board of Elections, uh, informed me, uh, that on May twelfth. Um, the, the law, the law is this, um, every Board of Elections, by law, must meet no less than, no less than ten days after an election. Uh, what that is, is that's kind of like a, um, a period of calm where any outstanding ballots, they're finding their way into the office. In this case, it was very important, because you had individuals mailing ballots in literally the day before the election. In our area, there's no way those ballots arrived the next day, because they have to go to Columbus, they have to get processed, and they come back. So, we had ballots, Souda County Board of Elections saw ballots coming in, literally, they saw them coming in the day of the election. They saw them coming in the day after the election. I don't know about after that, but I'm sure there was still some trickling in from here and there, and they have the provisional ballots. Those are separate. Uh, I believe there was hundred-seventy-eight provisionals. I'm not one-hundred percent sure about the numbers. That's all Board of Elections stuff. Um, that's not something we're responsible for. That's all the board. They literally have a board over the Board of Elections, and then you have the election workers that work in the office. They will meet on May twelfth. My understanding is they will process all the remaining ballots. That includes your provisionals and anything that was mailed in by the seventeenth. Is that right? I believe it was, yes. And, um, and then they will, uh, accumulate all of those numbers, and they'll announce it. They should announce it on the twelfth of May.
One more just popped up, sorry. "What do you mean by indigent defense will be impacted?"
Um, the reimbursement may be impacted. The act of indigent defense, meaning having the access to an attorney, will not. Um, the reimbursement rate may be impacted. So, instead of eighty-five percent reimbursement, um, you know, maybe they'll reduce that to eighty, uh, or seventy. We've seen it as low as forty.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which means that is more money out of the general fund, because that's where the reimburse, uh, that's where indigent defense comes from. It's reimbursement. If we pay out a hundred thousand dollars, then if they say we're going to repay you back at eighty-five percent, we get eighty-five thousand dollars of that back, but that fifteen thousand comes out of the general fund. If they reduce that rate, that's more coming out of the general fund. That's less money that the county has for essential services, things like that, that goes toward paying indigent defense. Indigent defense is guaranteed by our constitution, that each and every person has the right to, to a defense and have access to an attorney in our, uh, constitutional republic. So, that is something that's guaranteed by law. Um, what we're talking about is the impact will be on the dollars that are spent, uh, or not reimbursed. So, but definitely, r- indigent defense is a guaranteed thing in our constitution, constitutional republic. What else, sir? That's it? Okay, all right. Well, thank you, everyone, for watching. Um, I know we've had a lot of people watching here lately, a lot going on. I think, uh, we've been the only meeting in town (laugh) for a while now. That's getting ready to change. Um, I know Portsmouth City Council's getting fired up to go on Monday again, and we're glad to hear that. Uh, we've been working with them on the PACE finance, uh, getting the PACE district set up in Portsmouth, which is going to be great for economic development in Portsmouth as well. So, we're very excited about that. With that, do we have a motion?
Yes, I make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a blessed day.